Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, council, any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? Not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the August 27th council meeting, approval of the special payroll from August 29th of $59.12, approval of the September 7th payroll of $119,920.27, and approval of claims in the amount of $389,251.85. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by Anderson to approve.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Please call the roll.
Anderson. Yes. Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we'll move to our public appearances this evening, and we have two. First is Amber Burrow. Amber, if you could come on.
Hi, my name is Amber Burrows. I'm a high school senior here at Fairfield High School. This summer, I noticed that there was a need for numbers on the curbs because it would help identify different house addresses for different emergency services like police and fire and in case of other emergencies. And... So I came up with a plan, and I was going to create my own business to help people out with this, and I would work like in the summers and on breaks and weekends.
Okay, yes, it's very nice. Chief, how do you think that would help your officers in certain circumstances?
Definitely. Any quickly way to identify, especially in emergency services when you're trying to quickly drive down a roadway, is greatly appreciated. We're always asked as citizens to have it in plain view, and it'd be even better if it was on the curb. It's a fabulous idea. We've already been in discussion with Chief Scott Vaughn with the Fire Department in reference to how to make it work, but leave it up to a high school student outsmart emergency services and think it's something we hadn't thought of yet.
So did you envision your suggestion being citywide for all sidewalks or for all curbs in front of homes, or how did you envision it?
Well, what I planned on doing was putting flyers on people's stores around town, and if they wanted this service, they could pay me the money and I would do it, and it wouldn't be affiliated with the city at all, like I said on the flyer. I don't know if you guys have them.
No.
I have an example if you want to pass it around.
Thank you.
And...
It would be a uniformed design?
Yes, they would all have a white box with black numbers on the inside of the street address.
And do you want to tell them what your plan was for anywhere there might not be a curb?
Oh, if there isn't a curb, I was planning on offering to paint them on their driveways.
Okay. And have you researched materials, paint, that sort of thing?
Yes, I watched different videos on like how to, and I researched different paints that would work well for concrete. And I had bought these stencils to use for the numbers. They're made out of brass. They have like each number one through nine.
Okay.
For smaller curbs, I could also use a smaller stencil.
I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit us from doing it at this point. I guess I'm just wondering whether the city would want to establish it via ordinance so that we have...
The committee, the property committee, met with Ms. Burrow, thank you very much, and her father, Brian, this last meeting, which would have been...
Last Wednesday.
September 5th.
Hmm.
And we appreciate their input. We had a nice discussion with all the committee members, Katie Anderson, Darren Hamilton, myself, City Administrator was present, Aaron Coecker, Chiefs of the City Code Officer, Scott Vaughn, was present as well, and a very thorough discussion. Our concern as a city was obviously liability. If the city, if you've got curb signs placed, there may be some concern that someone may believe that's a function of the city if a problem will occur, but we're satisfied in talking with our city attorney that it's not an issue. There have been other cities, we understand, and talking with Mr. Hamilton, other cities that have used or instituted such a practice, and it's been helpful. So we're happy, we're pleased that Ms. Burrow spoke with us last week, and as a committee, we're happy to recommend to the full council that this project be approved. There's no risk to the city as far as we can tell, no expense to the city, and it may be a service that the citizens who choose to take advantage of it.
All right. Any other comments?
No.
No, I was just thinking, after the game Saturday, I was going to ask, could I request a color change? But that's all right.
Gold, black.
I'm black.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I was thinking about making a stencil for Hawkeye fans so I can do a Hawkeye logo.
That's where you're going to get into trouble.
You are going to do well.
Yes.
Personally, I'm a Cyclone fan, but it would be pretty easy to do a Hawkeye logo.
Great idea. All right, so I think it would be good to have a motion of support from the council for the project so the public knows that this, that we have looked into this, and I'm sure that whatever you do as far as getting your flyers, that will be legal also. So entertain a motion then to approve the proposed project by Amber Burrow. So moved by Rasmussen and second by Gandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Great, congratulations, Amber. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request from Emily Kelly of Fairfield Safe Meters. Emily?
Just wanted to say I really liked Amber's idea, reflective paint would be great, too.
Reflective paint.
Yeah. At night, there's not a lot of light, something in some places, especially around my rentals. So I was very pleased that the city wrote to the Iowa Utility Board on behalf of the many concerned citizens in Fairfield regarding the smart meters issue. Thank you to the Environmental Committee, to Einar Olsen for his well-thought-out attachment, and John Morrissey for writing a clear, very well-written letter from the city. When I got to the very end of the city letter, I saw in the attachment a mention of a potential opt-out meter, the Itron Centron C1S. I was surprised the city was endorsing a particular brand of opt-out meter, a product that the city has not tested or researched. I called Mayor Ed Malloy and told him there was sufficient cause to exclude that endorsement, and he agreed. On September 4th of 2018, last week, I spoke to a well-respected electrical engineer who tested this meter, Mr. Bill Bathgate, to verify his findings. He confirmed that the C1S does generate dirty electricity. Dirty electricity is harmful to the health of humans and animals. Studies have been shown that dirty electricity produces artifacts or spikes in the electricity coming into the home, which attacks the nervous system of the body. I have copies of this test, which includes a link to a study describing this. In defense of the writer of the attachment, Einar Olsen, Mr. Bathgate told me he found an error in his previous findings. He had measured the C1S in his lab and only very recently found that his findings were skewed because his lab shared an electrical transformer with a neighbor who had a smart meter. The dirty electricity from the neighbor's smart meter was causing dirty electricity to enter his lab and affecting the baseline, dirty electricity, I'll just say DE, readings of Mr. Bathgate's analog meter. The utility company came out at his request and separated his neighbor from the transformer, and Mr. Bathgate's analog meter reading went way down for DE to a very safe low level, but the C1S still generated DE as before. I'm telling this story because it points out that all those who share an electrical transformer, which is almost every home in town, as many households are usually linked to one transformer, also share whatever electrical pollution or DE they have in their house with their neighbors. This is why so many people in town don't support smart meters or the opt-out digital meters, as both produce damaging dirty electricity. Attaching these citizens' notes to the city letter indicate an endorsement by the city. This information was entered into the formal case docket of the Iowa Utilities. This information implies that all of the city of Fairfield supports this digital meter, while in fact, a very large majority of concerned citizens support analog meters because they are known as a safe, reliable, and economical meter used for a long time. Alliant reported these numbers to us Thursday. 1,641 households in Fairfield have called into Alliant refusing smart meters and requesting analogs only as an opt-out. 400 households filed complaints in the IUB docket. 550 households sent certified letters to Alliant refusing smart and digital meters and asking for analogs only as the opt-out option. These numbers are so impressive because each number represents one household, not individual, not separate individuals, meaning more than half of the households in town reject smart meters and digital opt-outs and want analogs. If the letter, if the city letter as it stands is not changed, this information regarding the C1S has to be challenged in the upcoming November 5th and 6th IUB court hearing, where it will be shown to be inaccurate, thus potentially calling into question the credibility and due diligence of the city of Fairfield. I formally request that the city letter to the IUB be corrected in the case docket, making the changes submitted to you tonight and resubmitting the corrected version of the letter into the case docket and to the IUB as soon as possible, at least this week. Thank you for taking the time to consider this important matter.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
I have here, by the way, something I was going to pass around, just showing the changes. There's one addition and common changes.
So council, I just, we're going to cut to the... Essentially, I had conversations with Councilman Flornoy about the intention of the committee that reviewed the original documents, and they did not intend to be arbiters of any technology or any health risks. So essentially, that was probably an oversight, that reading that particular section of the memo, which was submitted by a citizen, was probably, you know, inappropriate for us to be seen as potentially making our own statement on that. So the intention would be to withdraw, our intention would be to withdraw that. And the author of it, Mr. Olsen, has said, yes, that's fine with him if that is taken out. I've spoken with the IUB, and the only thing the IUB would need from us is a letter stating that we would withdraw the original letter and memo and then resubmit what it is that we intend without that section.
Correct, and Einar has copies for all of us, I think, of the edited version?
I don't know that we need to see it. I mean, essentially, there's one section. This is not a public hearing. We're really, we're not going to be taking public comment. I just want council members to make their determination.
So the edited version simply removes all reference to any kind of analog, analog or digital or smart meter.
Right.
Altogether, the intention of the letter and the hearing was to only address procedural issues that were related to customer service issues, and so the revised version shows that intent.
Yeah, there was one final section that had the information that was of concern, and we discussed that with Einar, and he's agreed to just allow, you know, just to pull that out. Of course, it's our document, we should be able to do whatever we want with it, but then again, it's, that would be the recommendation at this point in time.
So I would move that we accept the...
Excuse me, can I?
Just a minute. I would move that we accept the changes that are being proposed here, withdraw the original document, and submit the new document.
What is the new document, though, that's going to be resubmitted? Is it...
It's, no, it's identical.
It's actually identical to what...
No, it's actually, it's going to be identical to what we first submitted without that final paragraph.
And John is going to have the amendment. John just showed me an amendment that...
That is not, that was another consideration, but that's, that would be submitted without withdrawing the current piece, which we're not planning to do.
One thing that's very important is that a piece be added saying that no dirty electricity be generated. Otherwise, in the parameters, you're just describing the C at the C1S.
Does anyone on the council have an understanding of dirty energy and dirty electricity and familiar?
Noise is what it is.
Yeah.
Spikes.
Are you willing to put that in your document, that you don't support that?
No, the document as it stands now says the parameters that the meter possess should be written in, down, and formed part of a contract with the consumer without specifying what kind of parameters they should be, other than no RF transmitted, no RF measured, that kind of thing. So...
It's not true. This is not going to be a public hearing on the issue. We're trying to take care of something procedural.
Well, it says it right under the S M P S.
I would, I would like to second Doug's motion. Thanks. Second by Flornoy to approve the amended motion to the amended city letter. Any other discussion? Emily, you can make one last point.
Thanks. The whole thing is that if you leave out the no dirty electricity, then that is basically a description of what the C1S is, what is in there, and so putting in no dirty electricity will protect and satisfy what all the people who want analogs want. That's the important thing. So if that's not put in there, that's extremely important. I know it's a technical issue, and it's not easy...
Yes.
...to understand, but it's important.
I'm sorry, interrupted. Reading this over again, paragraph seven, I know you correct me if I'm wrong in reading this.
Seven C.
Seven C says sufficiently high-power quality, meaning sufficiently low dirty energy.
But that is in reference to the, let me just...
There's no C1S that's going to take out.
Yeah.
So this is a whole different thing? See, I haven't seen this, so I don't know what it is.
Emily, we've, no, we've talked about this, that that entire section of the memo that refers any at all to Centron C1S is being, is being withdrawn.
Right, but I had said that we really need to add something about dirty electricity.
I...
Einar, I would like to call the question on this, please.
Emily, yeah, I appreciate that you're asking for that, but I don't see any support on the council, so we're going to take the vote. All those in favor of the amendment that's been proposed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Okay, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you for your flexibility in the policy.
I'm not so flexible about this.
Next, council, we'll move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first is simply to set a public hearing for leases on agricultural cropland adjacent to the Fairfield missile airport. That will be at our next meeting, September 24th, at 7:00 PM. Would entertain a motion to approve the date for the public hearing.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Could you take your conversation into the hallway, please? Next, council, we'll move to an action item for the approval of a Little League lease. Paul, are you going to address that through your committee?
Yes, again, the, thank you, Mayor. The property committee again met, again, on September 5th, and the parties mentioned earlier were present. We discussed the proposed Little League lease, and it was voted upon and decided at that time that, subject to further consultation with our city attorney, John Morrissey, we would consider the lease again as a committee this evening before council, full council meeting. We met this evening, all council, all property committee members were present, as well as the city engineer, Melanie Carlson, as well as city attorney, John Morrissey, and intermittently the city administrator, Aaron Coecker. We decided that to recommend to the council that, subject to an update and correction of the meets and bounds or legal description of the lease, that we recommend to the council that the lease otherwise be approved. The section that was of concern to us in our September 5th meeting was to what extent the Little League is going to have some control over park, certain parking issues, and the lease has been modified, the language has been modified as such, so we think as a committee that the Little League is going to have the kind of control they need in order to make sure parking is safe. So we're recommending to the council that the Little League lease be approved as it is, subject to an update of its legal description.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any, any questions regarding the lease? John, any other comments?
City engineer seek a survey, probably from French Reniker. I talked with the administrator about this, and we both thought, probably it makes sense. We had a gift of additional land since the last time we did the lease 25 years ago. It's probably a good idea to have a perimeter description of the entire thing. That's going to also resolve a potential encroachment because of what appears to be a dimensional one-figure error in one of the deeds. Once we have that perimeter description, we'll just have that incorporated by reference into the lease you approve. If you approve it, we should be good for another 25 years.
Great, okay, thank you, John. So we have a motion by Gandy to approve the lease to the Fairfield Little League, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consideration of an amendment to our financial policy. Aaron, if you would lead us through that.
In the financial policy, we're basically addressing the bid requirements for horizontal and vertical infrastructure. Those requirements are set each year by the state law. What we did is, instead of setting the actual dollar amounts in the, in our policy, we went to refer to the state code rather than to the dollar amounts, so that as long as that state code doesn't change, we can always not have to change our policy each year. There was a few other grammatical things that Melanie found throughout the policy, but other than that, the major, the major thing was is that we're just referencing state, state code rather than, we're going to set it at the vertical and horizontal, like 50,000 and 100,000.
So that's, that's section C, competitive bidding. You've changed one, two, and two B, it looks like, to add those code changes to values that used to be assigned in those areas?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any, any questions regarding the policy amendments? Entertain a motion to approve the amended financial policy in the city.
Still moved. Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, council, we have the third and final reading for amendments to our crosswalk ordinance. This is a public hearing. We'll declare the public hearing open at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and move to approval of the third and final reading.
They're moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
I will abstain because of my employment with the Iowa Department of Transportation, and this project includes Highway 1.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to ordinance 1170, which is amended to the school zones ordinance. This is the third and final reading. We will open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and move to approve the final reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to the third and final reading of our, yes, bow hunting private property, but first, there is an action item that is tied to that, and that is the policy statement that is referred to in the ordinance, and Councilman Hallie, if you'd talk about that statement, please.
So we started with the one-page agreement. So anyone who is granted permission to bow hunt according to all the state DNR laws and is on a property that has all the setbacks here must read this and sign it, and John Morrissey came up with some of this, assuming it runs parallel to state law, but it's good to reiterate it, that there is no baiting or using lasers or laser lights, we're also not allowing any sort of compound or crossbows. So it's just kind of restating what's already in the DNR for this purpose of just making sure that everyone who is going to do this has agreed to it. But if you scroll down a little bit, Jason, we've included those setbacks under number six. So this is what we had talked about last council meeting. 150 feet from occupied buildings, 150 feet from any property owned by the school district, 75 feet from unoccupied buildings, and 75 feet from street or trail. And, and then we just added a little bit of common sense in there. If you look at the, near the end of that section, if, says hunters are to be at all times cognizant of locations of civilians and occupied buildings, and are not permitted to take shots in the direction of the same from less than 150 feet. Common sense, if you see somebody anywhere, you don't take your shot. So we wanted to keep this as a one-page agreement. They sign it, and now there's a little bit of enforcement that we can do if they break any of these policies. Now, if this first year, if we run into issues and we need to add points to this, we can without needing to change the ordinance.
So this, this is a document that once the hunter, the property owner, knows they're going to hunt, they've applied for their tags, they need to come in and get this before they do any hunting...
Yes.
...on their property, sign it and leave it as a record with the city?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, first thing, they need to obviously get their hunting license, their tags, all of that, and then they do this, and now we have something that they've signed off on, in case any of these are broken, we can enforce them.
Good.
Hang on just a minute. You don't want to not have them have it on their person. The idea here is that the hunter would be just as equipped in town as they are out in the country if a DNR officer stopped them. They're going to have their, there are things that we require in here. When they come into City Hall to sign this, we assume they've already got an agreement with the owner, and that should be in writing. They're going to have, if they're born after 1952, I believe it is...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, they got a hunter safety certificate.
Right.
They're going to have their set of this, and we're going to keep a copy of it at City Hall. It'll eliminate the need to go to Fire Department as one ordinance that we passed had, or to the Police Department. We'll just have it, and they're basically certifying they've done these things, so they'll have in their position at least their safety certificate, their owner agreement, and this, plus their hunter license and two tags.
So if there's a violation of what they've done and they're caught at it, if they don't have this document on them as well, then that does what?
Well, the way of the world is they probably better have it in their vehicle if they don't have it on them. That's usually about the extent of discretion that a conservation officer would afford them if they say they've got it all, but they just don't have it in their pouch or whatever they're doing. The sticky thing I see in this is neighborhood agreements. The example came up in the committee discussion about what if you got three people with 160 or 70-foot deep lots that they are adjacent to each other, and somebody wants to take a shot, and there's these three lots together, they're only 60-foot wide each. Can they agree that that 150-foot dimension will allow them to shoot across the neighbors that are agreeable lots at that deer that's out there 160 feet away from the bow hunter? I think that's what a TUMWAS ordinance allows, and I think that's what we're intending the agreement between private property owners could mean. As long as they're not shooting back at occupied structures, as long as they're elevated, and as long as it's a reasonable shot, I think you'll see those kinds of things coming up in town. When we were talking about this in committee, at first, we were thinking, maybe we... When we were talking about this in committee, at first, we were thinking, maybe we're restricting this to only the very large lots, the very large lawns in town, or estate-sized properties. And it's going to really curtail the number of people involved in hunting. But it doesn't have to be that way. I think if we use, what I understand works in a TUMWAS with neighbor agreements, you just got to make sure there really are neighbor agreements. This is going to work if every other neighbor says, I'm not doing that. But anyway, it can work that way, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. So, so essentially, you're saying that it will need to be on the person? It'll need to be on the hunter along with license and?
Yeah, they should be the same situation as they are in the country.
Okay. So it's not on file?
Produced on.
One on file, one on.
One on file, one on. Okay.
Yeah. And at the top, it also says they need to provide a map of the location with the setbacks. So they have to kind of give some sort of certification when they sign this, that the place they're hunting fits those setbacks.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. So on the action item alone, which is the policy statement that will be required, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. Then we'll move on to the third and final reading of the ordinance that's amended to allow bow hunting on private property in the city limits. This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if anyone would like to, yes?
John, when you said neighborhood agreements, would that be in writing?
Yeah, I think if you're going to have a sketch of a lot, and you've got a neighbor agreeing, I think you want to sketch both lots, and you want to have a neighbor sign off on something.
Yep. So if there were more than one lot, you'd have to have every owner of each lot signing off.
Right.
Every property hunting.
Yeah, so if there are two or three lots together, get them all to sign. You want to carry that around. There's already a provision in the Iowa code, if you're out in the country, you're supposed to have permission of the owner of land that you're hunting on. So you carry those things around. Sometimes they're only a sentence, and it's pretty generic. So you can have that kind of thing here, but if they're doing a footprint of where the hunt's going to be, and it's lot by lot, if the owners of those lots have signed, or it could be the tenant of those lots signing, that's, that's going to be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So it doesn't have to be the owner, but it's a rental property?
If it's a rental property, it could be a tenant.
Okay. Any other public comments? We'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion to approve the third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Hallie, second by Anderson. Discussion? Now please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, you recall, moved with the mayor's report, you recall back in August, we received word that, as a city, we were recognized by Soul Smart Organization for our steps that we've taken to make it faster, easier, and cheaper to go solar. So we received as a city a solar bronze, and we received this nice award back here this week that's been put up. So I just wanted to draw that to your attention. This Thursday, we, the, the city will be hosting, not, not the city itself, but within our city limits here, the Vietnam War Veterans Memorial, the Wall That Heals. It'll be arriving in town tomorrow. It'll be assembled. And then on Thursday, there'll be a opening ceremony at 6:00 PM. I understand that the replica of the wall is something that's really quite substantial, quite something to see. I know if you've been to Washington, DC, and have seen the memorial, I know I have a couple of times. It is very impressive, and I think we're very fortunate to be able to have it here. And again, pay respects to those who served in that war, and also the veterans in our community, and the lives that were lost in our area.
Mayor?
Yes.
My understanding is, is this is only the second location that this particular display has been put up in Iowa.
It is new.
And it's a new, larger version.
Larger.
Of what the previous display was. So it's really quite an honor that Fairfield has gotten, this is only the second location to be shown so far, so.
Yeah, it is, and it sounds, Karen, like it's substantially larger, so.
Yes, it is. The pieces that they have to put into place are approximately 80, or a little over 80 pounds each, and it'll take a crew of people probably eight hours to assemble it all out there at the fairgrounds. It's pretty impressive, from what I've been told and pictures I've seen of it. So it's well worth the time to take a visit out there over the next few days after it's up.
It'll be there through Saturday?
Through Saturday.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. So I just wanted to call everyone's attention to that. We'll move then to our committee reports, Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Yes. The Water and Sewer Committee met last week. We had two requests for water to be forgiven, charges that were, you know, asked. And the committee decided that both of them were not forgivable, and so the decision was made that the bills would remain the same.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We'll move then to our Property Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. We essentially have given our property report this evening with the various items. I think there were two items that are on the city, the council agenda, so we've already talked, said what we're going to say.
Okay. We appreciate it. Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee.
Okay, we had a meeting tonight at 6:30. We met with Dave Schaub of Waste Management, and he shared with us a concern, as you might recall, we were due to be issuing RFPs sometime in the near future for waste collection. And he shared with us his concern that their pricing structure has already been exposed, it's in the public record, and asked if we would extend the existing contract through to June of 2020 with an RFP being received February, March of that same year. Say, three or four months before the end of the contract, were we to extend it? So the recommendation of the committee is to do that, to extend the contract as it exists, without the bins, without being implemented, and then readdress that RFP issue after about a year.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. I would just comment, Dave, I appreciate the fact that we've, you know, we've gotten here because of what you offered to the community to give a trial on the, on the bins. And we had to wait until that was done before we, we proceeded. With the kind of public feedback we've gotten, it didn't feel like the political winds were moving in the direction of, of the bins and including them in the contract, so we probably have just let it, let it go a little bit in terms of time. I think this is a good solution, a good recommendation, to extend the contract and have something clean after the first of the year.
I agree.
Mayor, the one thing too, with the contract changing, it aligns with our fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay? So we now have a contract that totally aligns with our fiscal year. So from a budgeting standpoint, that kind of thing, things are all together now.
Right. Good.
So was the recommendation for 2019 or 2020?
2020.
2020.
2020. Why so far?
June 30th of 2020 gets us out a little over a year and a half, rather than just saying one year from now. It also gets us evened up with fiscal years as well, and it gives time for the RFP process to all be worked through.
All right. Well, I want to vent for a moment. I was on the Environment Committee when we set the date for 2018, or 2017, for both the curbside waste and curbside recycling to be renewed. Waste Management asked for an extension, which we granted last November, and in that, that same agreement to raise rates, we also agreed that we would do an RFP this month. Then Waste Management makes their numbers public, and then complains that they made their numbers public, and asks us to postpone the RFP. I'm not sure why we are postponing an agreement we had last November, that this would be the month that they would help us author that RFP, issue the RFP, and then get competitive bidding yet this year. It's already been extended a year, now we're extending it another two, because Waste Management, for the second time since I've been on the council, has shown their private bidding numbers publicly, and then cried foul because they did that. And we never asked them to do that. There was no RFP issued, so they chose to show numbers. They chose to, in a sense, give the indication that it was just a, a renewal, or changing an existing policy, rather than that it would go to competitive bidding. So I'm a little frustrated here. I like Waste Management's service, I just don't appreciate the way this is being handled. I think we should stick with the schedule we all agreed to last November. Author the RFP this month, issue it next, open the bids yet this year in November.
You can respond, Dave, sure.
Yeah.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Schaub, the Municipal Marketing Manager for Waste Management. Appreciate being here. Everything is correct, with the exception of, I had, I authored the proposals last year, which were discussed at council concerning the process we were in the middle of. In April of this year, I received an email stating that the Environmental Committee, having reviewed the proposals from the November meeting, asked if we would be willing to negotiate a new agreement, longer term, including carts, including, based on that, we went forward with the opportunity to respond to that with a priced program and a priced proposal, based on, strictly on the notification that we received in April. We understand full well what the process is with municipal work, and we understand full well that we had offered an RFP, and was pleasantly surprised to find out in April that the committee had shown interest in a negotiated five-year extension. Understanding how that works, we're going to follow the direction of the council. However, I'm in the rather breezy position of standing here with my prices exposed. And it wasn't just in order to bring it to, you know, ahead, other than we would, had been asked in April for a priced negotiated five-year extension, but I felt obligated to respond to that.
So the committee asked you that?
I received notification from the city manager based on response from the committee.
All right. I'm a little confused. Committees don't have authority. Full councils have authority. So why was the committee asking for information, rather than sticking with the agreement that we had council made last November?
Because we'd made an oversight. I didn't, until I went back and researched, well, I took over the committee in January, when I went back and researched the line of thinking and action by the council to get to that point, that's when I discovered the RFP, and we were not, we weren't operating on that basis. And anybody here seems to have as well, that there had been an RFP clause in that original agreement in November.
I don't see any procedural conflict with a committee asking for, for something different, different direction.
Well, the council made.
It would all still come back to the council for an approval or a vote.
Yeah, but the council had made a vote in November, and it included a timeline that included an RFP.
Okay.
That would be issued this fall. So I'm not quite sure how that got circumvented, so.
I think we're in an unfortunate circumstance, where we lost the committee chair, is no in the council, and there were a number of out-of-country trips. And we were in the process of replacing our city administrator, so we had two lead positions on the process that were in transition. And so I think, you know, through, you know, attrition, I mean, people coming, people leaving, it probably, it was an oversight, but it wasn't an intentional one, by any means.
Okay.
And I speak only because I was on that prior committee.
Okay. So it was an internal city error that has exposed Waste Management.
I believe so.
In a way that, were to go to RFP, we'd be exactly where we were in 2010, when I got on the council, which was the same situation. And we wanted to avoid that this time, by issuing the RFPs and only opening the bids privately. But here we are again, so I apologize, I'm a half a city, for that error.
I think it's fully understandable that we're at the confluence of a number of different moving variables, and so with committee changes, and everything else, and with my, my responsibility for the contract, and the terms of the contract. As simply as I can state, we understood that there was going to be an RFP. We were pleasantly surprised in April, and for a relationship that is as long and as deep as one between Waste Management and the city of Fairfield, if we're asked for a price proposal, we certainly respond to it, so.
One last question.
That's all we got there.
So when you got that, that email from our city manager asking for some pricing, you remembered that we had previously had an agreement to do an RFP, and you took that message as indication the city was changing direction or changing its mind?
Yes. The starter for this was, I had offered the paperwork for the terms that we had discussed in, in November. And as, asked those to be reviewed, so we could be in an assigned contractual arrangement for this period, I was informed that, well, having reviewed this, this is what the, the committee would be interested in. So that was the key to it.
That's the document I looked at when I made that proposal to the committee, when we discussed it, and then made that offer to you, and, not offer, but I was just conveying to you what the committee was going to recommend to full council.
Okay. I'm going to take, I'm going to go ahead and take this and ask for a second. We have a motion to approve the extension by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. Thank you. So with my bin, you going to come pick it up, or can I keep it?
No.
I want my, I want to keep my bin.
I will. I've asked that question three times this evening. We will have a specialized rate for those, and I've been asked by other testers as well. We'll have a special rate for those who have tested and would like to retain.
Okay.
Some of my handpicked people would like to keep their own, too.
Your handpicked people.
At this point, I'm sitting down.
Can you clarify that we've always had the option to have the larger bins, if you like?
Absolutely.
It's not well-known, I guess, but.
No, and there's a, the rate is considerably higher. I think it's $3.54, but we'll put together a rate, and I'll have that information back in the hands of the committee chair.
I'd be glad to buy it, and you can put a sold sign on it.
Yeah.
I just wanted my bin.
Just put that in the contract.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move then on to our Administrator Department reports.
Go ahead, Mel.
A couple of projects I want to update the council on, that are going to be moving in the next couple of weeks. First is the East Adams Avenue reconstruction. I received word today from the contractor, Jones Contracting, that they may be moving in on Monday. The only hesitation is, there are a couple communication lines that are on some poles. So if any of the local communication providers are listening, give me a call tomorrow. But, so, we, we'll be looking soon to have Adams Street closed from D, or Adams Avenue closed from D Street to 800 feet east of there, but essentially, Adams Avenue from D to Maple will be closed to through traffic. When we do have a set date on that, I will be notifying the property owners, as well as issuing a press release on when that will be closed, but it'll likely be before your next council meeting.
Melanie, can I stop you there?
If they were to not be able to hit, like, the next week or so, can we get a little more gravel in there? It's, um, it's enough to make cars bottom out. I've watched cars go through there and bottom out.
Okay.
So I think it got washed out in all of our lovely rain.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then the second project, the press release will go out tomorrow on this one. If you remember, earlier this summer, you accepted a proposal from Midland GIS Solutions to start preparing the city's GIS mapping. They will be in town late this week, early next week, to start doing their survey. They will be accessing all of the sanitary sewer manholes throughout the system, including the ones on the outskirts of town that may not be city, within the city limits, but they are still, we still have easements for those. Those, the Midland employees, their vehicles, as well as their ATV, will have the Midland logo on it. The employees' vests will have their logo on it, and the employees will also be carrying identification. So if there are any concerns, citizens would have the right to ask for any of that information or contact City Hall. So again, that's going to be happening into this week, early next week, probably last about two months, but we'll also, for the media, we'll get a press release out, so the citizens have the details in writing.
Update on the Alley Project here at City Hall, and there's a lot of good progress there.
A lot of good progress. We are trying our best to accommodate the funeral home out there and fitting it in, fitting that last section in between unplanned events. So that, between that and the rain, it's been slow the last couple of weeks, but I know that this, the east, no, the south section is open for City Hall employees and the chiropractor place. So they are getting there. The very, very last section that was going to be done is the sidewalk in front of City Hall. So we will have that barricaded off and get people notified of that when that, when that last portion gets done.
Okay. Thank you, Mel, appreciate that. Aaron, your report?
Last, two weeks ago, I went to the city managers' conference for Southeast Iowa, had some good conversations. I will be talking to all the council members. I've already met with a couple of them to discuss better communication between council members and city managers. I met with John Morrissey last week regarding an easement issue where we've got a letter from an attorney that's not very, or the easement owners aren't very happy with us, so I'm going to go with John and directly talk to the property owners so we can get that worked out, rather than have any more legal issues. Last week, the mayor and I and Rebecca met with Travis Squires regarding our financial status with the city, possibly bonding for projects and stuff like that. Looks like we will probably need to be a little conservative for another year or two, but outlook looks really good for us, for our city, so we'll be looking at doing some projects or larger projects in the future, but probably not quite yet.
Yeah, we looked, it was interesting in that, you know, we looked at our debt levy rate right now, and if you were to keep that levy stable at that level over a 10-year period, based on some of those bonds going off in the next year or two, what you would have available to you, that would not increase your debt service, but there are the dollars that would be available through bonding for projects. So it was inspiring, kind of heartening to look at that, because that's obviously one of the things that stops us when, you know, that, how that impacts the levy rate. But given that we're making so much progress on these bonds, even if we kept it exactly where it is right now, for an extended period of time, there would be, you know, money available through bonding.
So we're about 50% of our bonding capacity now?
No, we're at 37%.
We're actually down below that, and we're doing, realistically, we're doing really
well as far as the debts or bonding capacity is.
But the idea is to let these bonds fall off and then...
Correct.
Maintain our capacity less than 50%?
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess that the point I'm making is that, you know, right now, our debt levy is $3.75. If you were to keep that levy stable over a period of time, not only, you know, your capacity is fine, but you would have, you would be able to borrow and bond and not raise your debt levy, so. But at some point in time, Travis will give a full presentation of the council, and you'll get a picture of what's possible. If there's any other...
Mayor, I would like to make one statement. Saturday is Kids' Day. The club has made some final arrangements with the Fairfield Police Department, Fire Department, the city street crews for getting out barricades and blocking things off. We will be putting up the tent on Thursday evening on North Court Street, where we always do at the northeast corner of Central Park. So those parking spaces will be blocked off either Wednesday evening or very early Thursday morning. The tent will go up at 4:00. The equipment will be put in on Friday, and we'll have everything ready for Saturday morning for first pancakes at 6:00 AM.
Great, well, thank you for that. I'm sorry I didn't mention my remarks, but yes, that's definitely one of our favorite holidays, Kids' Day. So on that note, entertain a motion to adjourn to Kids' Day.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.